...nine fifty and the board is now reconvened in open session. The first thing we'll do is consider action on our closed session items. So, we will start.
I could go from here.
Thank you, Mr. George. We'll start with Mr. George.
Yes, Madam President. I move that the board approve the compromise settlement agreement between Fort Bend ISD and Debra Coleman regarding EEOC Charge Number 460-2015-03688, and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to execute the agreement as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. George and a second by Mrs. Tossan. Do we have discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Addy, I mean Ms. Hellinger, sorry.
Madam President and Board Members, I move to terminate Luther Mayberry's probationary employment contract at the end of the 2015-2016 contract year in the best interest of the district and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify Mr. Mayberry of this action in accordance with applicable laws and policies.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hellinger and a second by Mrs. Tossan. Do we have discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Dave, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Madam President. I move to propose non-renewal of Christina Carson's term employment contract at the end of the contract year and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify Ms. Carson in accordance with applicable law and policy and to specify that the hearing, if any, concerning the proposed non-renewal of Mrs. Carson's term employment contract be conducted before an independent hearing examiner appointed by the Commissioner of Education in accordance with Policy DFBB.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mrs. Tossan. Do we have discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. Tossan?
I have one more.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Rosenthal?
I move to propose non-renewal of Moses Horton's term employment contract at the end of the contract year and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify Mr. Horton in accordance with applicable law and policy and to specify that the hearing, if any, concerning the proposed non-renewal of Mr. Horton's term employment contract be conducted before an independent hearing examiner appointed by the Commissioner of Education in accordance with Policy DFBB.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mrs. Tossan. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, Mrs. Tossan.
Yes, Madam President. I move to non-renew the term employment contracts of the following employees: Tawana Aldridge, LaShica Allen, Felicia Arnick, Thelma Arthur, Tammy Brown, Kathy Burlison, Gwendolyn Chenier, Yvonne Fields, Shirley Foster, Stephanie Hodge, Ashley James, Debbie Jebbia, Mildred Jenkins Williams, Rachel Kent, Cheryl Little, Kathleen McNeil-Murch, Cheryl O'Connor, Darren Quintero, John Salzman, Dominion Southell, Sarah Weems, and Rashida Younger at the end of the 2015-2016 contract year and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify the employees of this action in accordance with applicable law and policy.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Tossan and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Okay, well, go ahead, Mr. Burdine, and we'll do that one. Sorry.
Yes, Madam President. I move to appoint Mitzi Patton to the position of Executive Director, Information Systems.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mrs. Tossan. Do we have discussion? Hearing none. Please, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Miss Hellinger?
Madam President, I move to appoint Amanda Bubella to the position of Director of External Communications and Media Relations.
We have a motion by Ms. Hellinger and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Mrs. Tossan?
I move to appoint Pamela Shaw to the position of Director, Parent, and Community Engagement.
Motion by Mrs. Tossan and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I believe that's the end of our closed session items. So, we are on next to our review items, and we'll begin with the proposed construction Dr. Dupree, do we have a presentation, or should we just go with questions from the board?
Really, I would go with questions. We've given you a thorough update on this and the board update, and then, I think it's pretty well spelled out here. We're prepared to entertain questions.
All right, very well. So, okay, great. Do we have any questions on the, do we have any questions on the construction projects as presented? Is the board clear? We're going to be approving the contractors, we're going to be approving the contract amounts, we're going to be authorizing the superintendent to negotiate and execute the contracts, and then I believe we're also approving the project budgets for all of these projects. Ms. Hellinger?
So, we're approving who the contractors are and the amount, the project itself, the whole package, right?
Yes.
And, just to be clear and make sure the community is aware of how we come up with, came up with who, how they were assigned, how projects were assigned to what contractors. It's want to make sure that, you know, our community understands.
Yes, so we have Oscar Perez and Bob Fazaklin. I think it'd be good, I know Bob was hopeful, to have a few minutes to share information about how our Small Business Enterprise Program has influenced these outcomes. Bob, would you like to talk about kind of the procurement process briefly?
And with regard to your question, Ms. Helliger, we, for instance, on the first bid package, we received five proposals. The proposal process was conducted in accordance with Chapter 2269, Subchapter D of the Texas Government Code. We evaluated those proposals in accordance with the rubric that was presented to the board at the December meeting in 2015. That rubric defined ten upper-level criteria that the committee was required to score. That was broken down into forty-eight sub-criteria, which were scored by two qualified evaluators, each at line item. Those were then rolled back up to the top ten items, and the results of that process are indicated in the scoring tabulation in your board book. With regard to this particular project, AAA, who was the recommended vendor for this project, has an eighty-four percent SBE participation rate. AAA are themselves a certified SBE. They are certified by the City of Houston, Metro, and Port Authority, all three of our authorized certification agencies. They in turn have subbed out a piece to another certified SBE firm, and the result is an eighty-four percent small business participation level on this particular bid. I'm very proud to present that number to the board this evening. It represents a lot of work.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. In that regard, I would like to introduce Jeanette Bullware. Jeanette, would you please stand up? Jeanette is our new Small Business Coordinator. She comes with a lot of experience in this area, has handled small business programs, particularly with regard to construction projects, so she's really, really a very good fit with what the board has asked us to do on the Small Business Program. Thank you.
Ms. Helliger says thank you. Mrs. Tossan?
Yes, and I appreciate you presenting that as well, because that was going to be, some of my questions were around where we were on getting the small business goals met in addition to where we are on budget on these. I felt like it was important to point that out, to be sure that the community knows where we are. So, on that bid package number two, where we are at eighty-four percent small business, for our small business goal, as you pointed out, we're also on budget, is that correct? For that particular?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so, I thought that was very good. I was reading through some of the numbers on these, and I know there were some we were on budget, and some we were a little over budget, and some we were under budget. So, can you share with us, maybe not on each one of the projects, but maybe what our overall, where our overall numbers are on this collection of projects that you've put forth this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Where we are, this round that we're bringing forward is, actually represents one hundred and forty-seven million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-two in projects that we're bringing forth. And the proposed budget that we're coming in is at one thirty-nine, three thirty-two, six oh three. So, we have a surplus at this point of fourteen million, one ninety-nine, seven eighty-six when you look at the overall program. And this is trending the way that we have been reporting. Everything has been trending in that same manner.
Could you say that number again? One hundred and forty-seven million, what was it?
I'm sorry.
Total projects that we?
Is one hundred and forty-seven million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-two.
Okay.
And then, based on our proposed budget, as I said, we have a surplus of fourteen million, one ninety-nine, seven eighty-six, and we have a shortage of five million, seven ninety-seven, four sixty-one, and our cumulative, we're to the good, a little over eight million, four hundred and two thousand, two thirty-four.
So, we're tracking to be under budget, eight point four million dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's exactly what I wanted.
Just to give you some perspective, that's about five point seven percent.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay.
And where are we on, looking at them, so it looks like in the second, what is it, bid package number six for New Elementary School Forty-Nine, looking at our SBE participation, it says we're at nineteen percent, and our district's goal is twenty-five percent. Where are we on getting this bid package to the twenty-five percent? Because I see here you say that the final proposal should achieve that goal. When will we know that, and where are we on that?
Yes, Ms. Tossan. I'd like to mention that in their proposal, Cadence McShane mentioned a three point seventy-five participation rate, and we have worked deciduously with them to get that number up. We not only look at the resources of our three certification agencies that are recognized by the board, but we go out to other friends and agencies that we know of, such as the National Association of Minority Contractors, the Houston Minority Supplier Development Council, and others. And they graciously make their databases available to us, and we can reference those databases to the contractors who are having trouble meeting the goal, and so we are able to work with them in what is truly a business assistance kind of way, so that we can help them raise their participation rate. With regard to Cadence McShane right now, I want to let you know that we've got hard certification for thirteen percent. We've got applications on file at the City of Houston for another six percent. We know that other applications are going to be going through. So, the point I want to emphasize to you this evening is that we continue to work, and we can continue even after the board approval, we can continue to work to get that number up to the goal, and we will be doing that.
So, you're speaking of Cadence McShane Construction Company, which is Elementary School Fifty, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, my question was about, which, your answer may be the same, but my question was about Elementary School Forty-Nine, which is, is it Drymalla?
Oh, Drymalla, okay. They're at nine point five nine percent in their bid.
But up to nineteen percent.
And we have got them up to nineteen percent. That's hard certifications on file with them. So, we actually file the certification documents from the City of Houston, Port Authority, whomever is the certification agency that is honoring them.
And then for, is it bid package number, sorry, I lost my place here scrolling around, for number seven, which is our Willa Ridge, Kempner, and Ridgemont renovations, that's prime contractors, they're over fifty percent, I think it's fifty-four percent.
Yes, they are.
Okay, yeah, so, thank you guys for your work on that. Back to the surplus that we have of eight point four million, can you tell us what's going to happen with that money, with that surplus?
Yes, ma'am. As we move forward, you know that we'll be coming back in June with some additional projects. Once y'all approve this, and that goes into program contingency, so then we would come back to the board to, if we're going to be able to use any of that, we would come back with a plan and then receive y'all's approval to be able to use it.
Okay, so, it's going to go into the program contingency and set aside for board approval on any future project, or before any future projects would be used?
That is correct.
With that money? Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions on this? I have a question about the square, price per square foot on the elementary campuses. There's a little bit of a difference in price per square foot. Do we have any understanding why that is, or do you see that as significant or insignificant?
The price per square foot is about three point six percent, the difference in the two, and that is really within norms for, you know, having different sites, for having different architects designing, you know, it's right within norms, and even when you do prototypes, you end up with, you know, one and a half to two percent or more, you know, difference in projects.
Right.
So, we feel that that's, you know, really pretty tight.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And then on this package that you're showing up here right now, is this all the projects for Willa Ridge, Kempner, and the Ridgemont Early Childhood Center, or just selected projects from those schools? Or is it all the, I was trying to look up, find the list, and then I couldn't really tell if it's all the projects for those schools.
It, it is all the projects, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And then, on the next, the next package, which is Package Nine, that's all of the mechanical renovations at Clements, well, that was a prior project, I guess, or my prior, the roofing at the Athletic Complex, and then the chiller is just a pullout from the part, the whole package for drawback.
Yes, ma'am, and the reason for that is that we have a chiller that it's failing that is in Bid Package Nineteen, which is Phase Two, and we've moved that forward to go ahead and bring it into this package and get the work done this summer.
Okay, all right, well, that seems, that seems good, and it seems like good timing. Is there an updated list, Mr. Hollyhead? Do you have an updated list of sort of the order of these packages and the timeline on them? I know at one time you gave us a list that had all that. Could you turn your microphone on, please?
Yes, ma'am, we sure do. And the numbers that we reported is for Phase One, so the eight main surfaces for Phase One.
Right, so, I'm just interested in the bid packages and kind of the, if you, would it be possible to get an updated list of the packages and the order that they're coming and sort of the approximate?
Yes, ma'am.
Timeline of when they're coming, so that we can kind of keep up with this?
Do you like Phase Two and Three?
Yes, I think the original sheet you gave us had that, but it looks like there's been some shifting around, so I was curious about it. All right, do we have anything else on this? Okay, I think we're ready to move on then to the board policy discussions. Thank you, all of you, for bringing all of this information to us. What did you, number sixty?
The first one up is the facilities name, the two divisions in that.
The first one up is a facilities, CW Local, naming facilities. Did we have any questions on this one, or comments, or suggested changes? No? Okay, the next one then is EG Local. And I think we have some comments or questions on that one. Mr. Rosenthal, if you'd like.
Yes, ma'am. Overall, it looks good. My question was, let me, my eyes are getting a little weird here.
Looking for my binder, so.
Yeah, yeah, on the taught, under taught curriculum, item number two, where it talks about scheduling time for teachers to plan collaboratively for the purposes of analyzing content objectives and so on and so on. I'm glad to see that that's in policy, I guess it's always been in the policy, right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that that's being implemented consistently.
We're focusing on that.
Good, because, like I said, like I was telling you earlier, one of the things that you hear when you go out campaigning is you hear how there's some inconsistencies.
Yeah.
Specifically with regard to that, so.
I have a question, I guess on the previous page, and I think it's on this, I can't really see that very well, but it's on a couple of pages. The phrase "Curriculum Framework," that comes up later as part of the board's responsibility to approve that, what is that? Or is that, I'm not clear on what that is, and have we ever approved it before, or what would it look like?
Yes, ma'am. We brought the Curriculum Management Plan to the board about a year ago, I believe it was. It was a comprehensive document that followed the TASA audit review and provided direction for design, delivery, evaluation, and management of the curriculum. That's all in the framework. It established guidelines and procedures for the development, revision, deletion, enrichment, and evaluation of the written curriculum, and an ongoing cycle of curriculum examination based on those audit recommendations, and for upgrading the curriculum. The goal for the plan is to be written in such a manner that it would interface with district major plans and strategic planning. The plan will also take into account staff development, technology assessment, textbook adoption, and all of the resources that support the curriculum. All of that is part of that framework.
Okay, so, is the Curriculum Management Plan the same as the Curriculum Framework?
The Curriculum Management Plan is the cycle of that continuous process and frameworks of the individual pieces of it. The plan is, it's the total document. I think we provided it to you in a spiral document.
Okay, last year about this time?
Yes, sir, ma'am. We can provide you another copy if?
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I, okay, I, yes, I'd like to know what that is.
It was April twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, was when we did that.
Okay.
Who slipped and said?
I have two.
Not enough, but.
And so, I assume that in that, when it talks about the, in the common direction of action, that's what?
That's what it's talking about. Yes, ma'am. The common direction of action is the alignment of the curriculum and the instruction and instructional programs in the district aligned to the standards, aligned to the expectations of the board with managed curriculum.
Yeah, I was just, I had trouble understanding what this meant, so it seems like other people might have trouble understanding what it meant too, so.
I am glad you asked that, because I was looking at the, staring at the same term, Curriculum Framework, and not really.
Sure what it meant. Well, I guess I'll look at what the, whatever the Curriculum Management Plan is, and then maybe the way we can write it a little better, so.
We could spell it out, the components of it, rather than referring to it as the framework. Perhaps we could be more specific about the components of it.
And maybe this, yeah, use the actual language we've used in the boardroom instead of phrases or terms that wouldn't be, that I'm not familiar with. So, that would be a thought. I'll, we can look that up. Mrs. Tossan, do you have a question? I'm not, but go ahead.
I don't know.
No, go ahead, I have another thing, but go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish.
No, it's all right.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you didn't, it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I had some suggestions, maybe for some, just some language in a few places, starting on page one of seven, down in the paragraph that says "The District Shall Continually," and then it, we, we made a change, we took out "Support." My suggestion is to put that back in, because we say "Instructional Strategies Shall Be Derived From Curriculum Content That Provides The Appropriate Level Of Challenge And Rigor," which I like, I like that we included the word rigor, but I feel like we should put back in maybe "And Support If Needed," because we, I don't know how I feel about removing support, because there are students that need support, and I think it's good to keep that in. So, challenge and, challenge, rigor, and support if needed to help all students reach their full potential. That was my suggestion there.
Yeah, I would just say, challenge, comma, rigor, comma, and support.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't need to put "if needed," because you should be, whatever's appropriate, because you've got appropriate in front of all that.
Whatever's appropriate, right. Then down on the next page, we say, each guide shall, and then we list reflect alignment with the TEACs, include scope, sequence, timeframe, et cetera. And I thought it might be worth adding here, because we've talked about including suggestions for modifications, whether it's for students in special ed or gifted students, so I just wrote "Include Modified Curriculum Methodologies, Examples, Supports, and Resources For Differentiated Instruction," or "Expansion of Curriculum For Use With Students Who Are Gifted Or Have Learning Differences." I don't know how you guys want to phrase that, but that's, that's kind of what I wrote here, that if it's our intent to expand our curriculum out to include those things, it would probably be worth putting that in right here. it would probably be worth putting that in right here. On that same page, oh, the re, it should be research-based, the red, not re, research-based.
Yeah, it's a typo in the red writing there.
That's correct.
And then, uh, under the taught curriculum, this systematic process shall include, and then we have the, I think it's four things listed there. I just thought, again, we should add here ensuring appropriate supports are in place for students, and planning for differentiated instruction for diverse learning populations. I just thought something, again, here should be part of the systematic process, just ensuring that those supports are in place for, for our diverse learners. Oh, and then on the assessed, tested curriculum, I think it's on page three of seven. This goes back to my earlier question about student growth, because we talk about academic performance, assessing students' academic performance and diagnosing their academic needs. And I thought it might be appropriate to put something about student growth or student progress there, because it was vague to me.
It says, number one says, number one says measuring student progress, but.
Okay, well, and maybe that's, I guess academic performance was just vague. Maybe it lays it out after that, it's not how I read it, but it does say that, this process shall. So maybe it's fine like that. Whatever you guys think.
I was okay with it.
Um. So one of the, my last question, let me make sure it's my last question. Who is responsible for preparing and managing the timeline for curriculum development? We don't really address that in here. We talk about, I mean, we talk about the development of curriculum, but just as a side question I had, who, who is responsible for preparing and managing the timeline for the curriculum development? And should we address that? I mean, it's one of our big five. I mean, I don't know if it.
Well, on that page five of seven.
Okay.
Under Central Office Administrators, it says ensure that a master long-range plan is in place for district curriculum development. So I think that would include the timelines. Unless you think you'd like to be more specific.
I don't know.
Long.
I mean, I didn't read that as, I guess I didn't read it in the, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Is it maybe something like, uh, ongoing plan is in place for district curriculum development revision, program evaluation, and student assessment, and include stakeholder input?
I just thought it might be a good idea to address, since that's one of our, kind of we've identified as that one of our, our big goals, that we should put in policy, something about that, about, about what the timeline should be, or maybe not, maybe not specifics about the timeline, but just something in policy about our expectations for the timeline, managing the timeline, making sure the curriculum gets written. I mean, it can always be modified later, once we get to a good place on it, but.
Is that something that then goes in the superintendent's responsibilities?
It could. It could be. And maybe that's a better place for it.
At this point? Because it's, at this point, right, we're still in the.
Right, in the development phase.
In the development phase. But then I don't know that we want what's essentially a superintendent goal.
To become, yeah. So I mean, that's a good point. And maybe some suggestions on where wording for that and where, and maybe, I do think you're right, that that's probably better for superintendents. Um, let's see. So one, one other question I had is, um, where is PE in the elementary school curriculum? Because I had, I raised this issue a while back. I know that we have a state mandate now that elementary school students have to have, I think it's 30 minutes of physical education, physical activity every day. And so I know we don't do that in elementary school. We, uh, PE is an outclass. And so they go to PE once a week, which means our kids are not getting the state mandated 30 minutes of physical activity every day. Which means that some of our kids' recess time is being taken for structured recess. Which I will say right now, I completely disagree with. We cannot be, I mean, I just don't see how we can take recess away from our elementary school kids. I think it's very important. So have we thought about how to address that going forward, so that our kids are not, so we're not taking recess from our kids in order to get that requirement?
I'm not aware of a campus having PE once a week. I wouldn't be in favor of that. I'm not aware of that. They do have to have, I believe it's 135 minutes a week. It's not cut by day, but a weekly number of minutes, and the state does allow for structured recess to count in part of those minutes. Stephanie, do you have anything you'd like to?
I'm sorry, Ms. Cullen, if you could come up to the microphone. Either one.
Just as long as the green light's on.
So that is correct. It's a 30-minute daily moderate to vigorous physical activity, or 135 minutes weekly moderate to vigorous physical activity. So to accommodate those limited days of PE, a lot of campuses are doing structured recess, which is the walking minutes. Some things that we have put into place to control that is our recess guidelines that was put forth by our Shack, to try to limit the days that were pulled for study hall, where kids missed recess, so that there was a limitation so that those kids were getting those 135 minutes of weekly.
So I think we need to look at that, because that's not being implemented consistently across the district. And some of our campuses are losing a lot of their recess time, particularly if they are given, in addition to structured recess, some silent recess, because too many kids talked at lunch or something, which is another completely side issue that I have. But campuses are doing a lot of structured recess, and there are campuses that have PE one day a week. And so they're making it up in structured recess. So the reason I'm bringing it up is because I think that this may be, I mean, I don't, I haven't gotten any data or information on it, so I guess the first thing I want to do is request that and see how we're planning to deal with that. But it may be something that we want to address in policy, to make sure that the Board's wishes are, you know, made public, and for you guys to have that going forward when you're thinking about curriculum for elementary school.
And I can provide some good data for you as well, because with our case indicators, when we develop them, one of the things that we included was that 135 minutes requirement to say, do you meet that requirement? As well as, are you offering 20 minutes of unstructured recess as a minimum week, daily? So we can provide that data for you, so you can see where the campuses are at that level as well.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful. But I think when we look at the elementary school curriculum, because it's becoming very complicated, you know, we have out, they have lamp, so they're having art, and they're having music, and they're having PE, and they're having now a science lab, and then they have a math lab. And so those are, and then we're having library. So that's too many outclasses for the week. And so some outclasses are happening every other week, and then PE is not consistent. And then I think that's why some of the structured recess is being used to make it up. So I just, I feel like we need to look at that, as I was thinking through this. We probably need to look at that as a whole, just to make sure, I mean, we're cramming so much now at the elementary school level, that the elementary kids are not getting free time and recess, and they've got quiet lunches, and, you know, all this craziness. These are little kids. So, um, anyway, I would like to get the data on that, and maybe we can have a more informed discussion about what that policy should look like on the curriculum.
Is it in policy? Do we have anything about physical education in policy?
I noticed there was, there was some, I would have to go back and find it, but that's kind of what made me think of it.
Maybe we can find that out, too.
So I was going to comment that we'll look into first where it is in policy, because I can't imagine that the legal requirement is not already in policy. I was trying to pull it up right now while you were speaking, but.
It's a brand-new law, well, I don't know, let me not speak out of turn.
It's actually been for 2015, 16, so we'll, I would imagine that we've already received an update. I'll look into that first, and then we'll see if the local already matches, or if we need to do something and let you know. It might not be this particular policy.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, first, I would agree. I, I think, I believe very strongly that, especially at the elementary level, you know, you kind of give kids a chance to be kids a little bit. And I know we, when we talked about the age program, one of the things I liked about it was they had a couple extra periods of recess. And I know when I was in first and second grade, we had recess three times a day. And, um, I don't know, I mean, I thought it was pretty good, yeah.
You turned out okay, so there you go.
Well, I mean, some people may, may argue with you there, but, um, but anyway, I really do believe that. And I think if there's a consensus, then we should get that in policy, because.
Yes, I don't think we should be using recess for silent lunch penalties or any of that. I think it should be playing and having some creative social play time, where they can be loud and run and all those things.
Yes. Agreed. I do have one other comment. Back again under the taught curriculum, curriculum number three, when it talks about the, uh, balanced, unbiased manner through the use of resources that present a variety of opinions and theories and a well-functioning, da-da-da-da. Is this actually happening? Dr. Dupree, you and I have had plenty of these discussions. We've actually talked about specific resources. But has any of this actually moved forward and been put into action?
I think it's on the road, but I don't think we're where we need to be, because we haven't done our overhaul of all the curriculum areas to really, to build the resource base. So a lot of teachers are still finding their own resources. We've done training on the expectation to use balanced resources, but I think if we want full implementation, we need to provide a bank of resources available. So we are still working on that.
Is, is there a way that at some point in the future that we can kind of see, you know, just kind of see what your inventory consists of, you know, in general?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be interesting, I don't know, we'd have to just explore how to present that.
Yeah.
But, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, nothing, nothing pressing like this week or next week or anything like that in the future.
Because you already have two binders to read?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question on this page that we're on right now, where it's, where it should say, shall use effective research-based change processes that include determining needs readiness. What does that sentence mean?
There are several research. There are several research processes, and basically it means that we wouldn't just go in and change a curriculum or a program without using a change process. One of them we've referred to frequently is the SWOT analysis, where we look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Another one, the University of Texas has one that we use, uh, that's where it originated from, where we start with a needs assessment. And then we go from a clearly articulated vision to planning the resources, the instructional arrangements, what professional development will look like or be required. The monitoring and evaluation as something is evaluated. As we find things that need to be reinforced or adjusted, how will that take place? And what data will be collected to support that? And all of that is part of strategic change processes. So depending on what change you were implementing, you would use a research-based process to approach it, whether it's a simple change or a complex change, rather than just because we said so or do it this way because we like it.
Right, so it's kind of talking about intentional, um, intentional, having reasons behind the change and identif, clearly identifying the reasons behind the change.
Right.
Before you make a change, and not just change to make change.
And thinking through, how will we change? How will we do that? For example, when we talked about literacy intervention.
The first step is figuring out if we need to change.
Right.
That's the program evaluation that we talked.
And the vision, does it fit with the vision?
Right. So the program evaluation that we talked about earlier is determining if we need to change. I was just trying to make the language so that it better aligns with some of the language that we've been using to talk about these things. So I might think about that this week to see what, how we could change it to make it, no pun intended, to make it better align with the other language we're using in our other policies that talk about our program evaluation and whatnot. Okay. Let's see if I had anything else. I was a little unclear on some of the board, um, the board roles and responsibilities. So we talked about the curriculum framework already, so I can look that up and see what that is. The part about adopting multiple instructional resources is crossed out. Does that mean we're, what is that, why is that crossed out?
We would not be coming to the Board for every single resource, like we, we would for textbook adoptions, for major resources, but not for every single instructional resource. And as I recall, that was the discussion.
Okay. So those, just in terms of purchasing items is when they're going to come to us?
Right, when it's a major purchase.
All right. Okay, well, I'll look at that a little bit more. I'm not, I'm still not all that clear on what the, I guess the framework is key, and once I understand that, then I'll better understand what the rest of the responsibilities are. Does anybody else have any other questions on this? All right, so let's go on to the next one.
Ms. James?
Yes, ma'am.
EHAB Legal actually has the information regarding daily physical activity. We do not currently have a local, but we can definitely, after working with Stephanie and her group, and perhaps develop a local to ensure consistency.
It sounds like the Shack maybe worked on that at one point, and I seem to kind of remember that. I don't, Mr. George, I think, is on the Shack right now. So maybe they had some ideas, and that would have some input from various sectors of the community, parents and community members are involved on that committee. So that would be, thank you, I'd appreciate that. Mr. George, please turn your microphone on.
I'm sorry. Did you understand it? So you're saying you would be able to develop a procedure?
We can develop a local policy that would ensure the consistency that Ms. Tassan is bringing to our intention with regard to inconsistency. Of course, it's always our goal to follow the law. And, but we will work with Stephanie and her group to ensure that we develop something and share with our leadership.
Okay. Actually, I serve on that committee, and actually, they have a very active, um, group of people. And I'm sure they would be able to recommend, or we would be able to recommend something. And, and absolutely, I share Ms. Tassan's concerns, and, you know, our children need to more, you know, they have to have more activity. So again, we are talking about all across the board, we are having consistencies, you know, like so. I hope you work on it and look forward to seeing something soon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rinkron. All right, next is EHAC Local. I've lost my cheat sheet, but is this one that's being deleted?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do we have any questions about that one?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal?
I know you explained it somewhere, and I saw it. Could you just explain why it's being deleted?
So the provisions that are being deleted here are actually, some of them are already in legal policy. Some of them are, they really. in legal policy, some of them are, they really come from TEA, and we have these in the grade course, the curriculum guidelines, the grade course selection guidelines, sorry. So, parents have ability to get that information without us having it in this local policy.
So, are parents going to understand if, you know, their kids, you know, don't try it up for Olympic figure skating, and working on that every single day, at least as long as the rink stays open, that they, they understand how that fits in?
It's in the student handbook as well, and so, there is information available to parents in, in mediums that are already being used by them regularly.
Okay, so do we all agree that we don't, we don't need this here, or?
Yeah, it's already in the legal.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Just want to make sure I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, next one is EHBB local. I had two questions on this one. All right, please turn your microphone on.
Yes, ma'am. That item number four, it says the population of the program for gifted and talented students shall strive to reflect the demographic characteristics of the total district. Would you please explain to me what does that exactly means?
That's on page three.
Page, yeah, item four.
Page three, at the very top.
Yeah, three.
Mr. George, earlier, when we talked about program evaluation, and the VISTAS program, that is an example of our intent to reach out to students who might not be readily identified as GT, because they perhaps have not had as many enrichment opportunities environmentally, as some of their peers, and so, we will take intentional efforts, such as that VISTAS program, to give all students an opportunity for that identification, not, we wouldn't want socioeconomic status, mobility, those kinds of things to be an issue.
Because if you, specifically, I asked that question, because if you recall, last time we discussed, there are certain demographics in our, in our district showing a low percentage of gifted and talented identified students, if you remember, especially when it comes to African-Americans, and also Latino population, and I refuse to believe one community, only God said, okay, you only have few gifted and talented, I refuse to believe that. So, I think we are missing, you know, missing out somehow, I don't know.
Oh, I certainly agree, and that is, when we did the program review for GT, that was one of the areas where we identified a need to improve, is in identifying students from more diverse populations.
Right, that's the very reason why I appreciate this wording there, I don't know, I mean, what I like to see is this being fully implemented, and finding out, we are, I mean, making sure we are not missing those children from identifying, and that's why I'm, I'm just, it encourages me to see something, put it in wording, but I, we like to see more of that implemented, that's what I mean to say.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. George. I had a question on this one, on the parent involvement in the furloughing process, and that's on page four, and I guess my question is, the language there says that they'll have had a conference with a student, and you could read it, or the parent, and I just wondered if we could make that an "and" the parent, or how the parent's involved in the decision, because the way it's written there, it almost looks like the decision's already been made before the parent, and then I wondered, that, my next, my follow-up question to that is, if the parent wants to appeal that decision, how is that done?
I think the key there is that it may be requested, but no furlough would take place without parental involvement, and maybe we need to make that distinction. A student could request it, a teacher could request it, a parent could request it, but it would not take place without parental involvement.
Okay, well, I think that's fine, I don't think that's how that's written, though. It sounds like, to me, when I read that, it felt like the decision's already been made, the student's placed on furlough, and they're going to tell the student, or the parent, and have the needs documented, and that's the end of that. So, I, I think would be, if you guys could reword that a little bit, to make it so, somehow the parent, it shows that the parent's involved in the decision, and then the parents, if the parent chooses not to be, I mean, you can't do that, but then they have to, then they need to be notified, and then there has to be, if they don't agree, there has to be a way to figure that out.
Reading down, it, it gets to the bottom of the next paragraph, maybe requested, it addresses that, but I, so I agree, I think it's, you kind of have to get to that.
Right.
It implies that it's happening, but, so I think we may need to reverse the order of something.
That would be, that'd be great.
We'll make it clear.
Okay, thank you, that would be, I think that would be-
And then you asked about the appeal, and appeals is actually in its own section, and that furlough decision could be part of an appeal, that a parent makes an appeal about the decision.
Okay, because this looks like regarding reselection for, or removal from, the program in its entirely, entirety, so maybe if you could add furlough in that, because a furlough, to me, is a, might happen for any number of reasons, that might be in the student's best interests, or the parent may disagree, for one reason or another, because the kid's just goofing off, and really isn't having appropriate differentiated curriculum access, so they're struggling with staying, with staying engaged. Okay, good. I had a, I guess I, let's keep going, I had another question, but I'll ask about it some other time, I'll send an email. EHBC is the next one, special programs. I think, I had a suggestion on adding a phrase in here at the, at the first sentence, at risk of dropping out of school, at risk of retention, maybe adding that in, because I think you're kind of getting to that, when you say, the students who aren't performing at grade level, and who haven't performed well on state mandated assessments, but this policy refers at the bottom to EIE, which is talking about the whole process of retention, and EIE refers back to this policy, so I felt like if you put the language, retention, at risk of retention, in at the start, that it would clarify that's what you're trying to avoid.
I think the reason that it's stated as it is, is because by law, we have to respond to the state's 13 criteria for at-risk students, and this is our statement of that, and it links it to that specific criteria.
Right, and in our local policy, EIE, part of that policy talks about how we want to reduce retention.
So, you want to-
And so, I, I think, in this local policy, that's a goal, and that's why we're having the accelerated services for students, to help reduce retention.
So, you would, you would like for us to add grade-level retention, is that what I'm?
Well, the phrase I wrote was, at risk of retention, right after, at risk of dropping out of school, comma, at risk of retention, comma. Does anybody else have anything to add on that? I got a thumbs up here, got a couple nods.
Okay.
All right, anything else on this one? We're ready to move on. Lost my list again, EHBE.